Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regular city council meeting to order. If you'd all rise tonight for the invocation, which tonight will be led by Father Dave Newhart from St. Elizabeth's Episcopal Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Albert Yavino.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Blessed art thou, Lord, O God, King of the universe. Heavenly Father, we do come before you. We bring to you our prayers, and we thank you, Lord, for those who serve this community and this great city. We thank you for our council members. We thank you for the staff that serves this great city. We ask, Lord, that you would bless this meeting, that you would give wisdom where wisdom is needed, voice where voice is needed, and most of all, grace where grace is needed. So, Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us and for the city, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Councilmember Yavino?
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. We've had a request to remove item 14B, and I'll have that removed without objection.
Right.
All right, thank you for that. So, 14B is out. Are there any other changes to the agenda this evening? All right, thank you. I have a few proclamations to read. I'm actually going to read Proclamations A, B, and D, and ask that, once I'm done with those, Councilmember Yavino, read Proclamation under item C. I'm not sure if everyone is aware. She's the chairman, CEO, president. What is your title at the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce?
President/CEO.
President/CEO, please come up. And then Nicole, please come up. Our tourism director, so falls for her, too. Thank you very much. This is a proclamation for National Small Business Day, which is May 10, 2019. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. The contributions of the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce has greatly impacted hundreds of businesses and thousands of jobs in our community over the last 65 years. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. Whereas because this country's small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we should discuss ways to support our entrepreneurs to ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May 10, 2019, as National Small Business Day, and urge the citizens of Sebastian to join me in support of the city's small business industry.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council, and city staff. We really appreciate your support as the mayor identified over the last 65 years. We have a long history of collaboration and support of the small businesses, and we just look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce is an integral part of what makes this community run well. They do an outstanding job for our community, and I'm very proud to know them, support them, and I'm very proud of the fact that Ms. Bachelor is here to take the reins and move us into the next several decades. So, thank you. Is Ms. Bachelor here? Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce, President, Director, CEO. This is a proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week, which is May 5 through the 11, 2019. Whereas the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce and the Pelican Port of Visitors Center is one of the primary tourism destinations, marketing agencies on behalf of Indian River County that attracts eco-lovers, adventure-seekers, and relaxation enthusiasts through their dedicated, passionate, and reliable, award-winning promotion of our simple pleasures and authentic treasures. Whereas travel has a positive effect on Florida and the nation's economic prosperity, growth, and image abroad, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors. Welcoming visitors from near and far away has been and always will be the enduring ethos of the travel industry in Florida and the city of Sebastian. Whereas Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce recognizes that meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments. And whereas leisure travel spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creatively, creatively, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships, travel matters to Sebastian. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May 5 through the 11, 2019, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Sebastian, and urge the citizens of Sebastian to join me in support of the city's travel and tourism industry.
So, Mayor, council, and staff, it is an honor to be here before you today. National Travel and Tourism Week was identified by the U.S. Travel Association, and we are very privileged to be a part of it. We are just one small part, and this is a time where we encourage you to increase your staycations in the local area and also support the services that our businesses provide through tourism. I just wanted to give a couple statistics. Last year, we serviced over 10,000 visitors in our Welcome Center located at the corner of Main Street and Indian River Drive, and we have over 150 tourism partners that we work with, restaurants, hotels, attractions. So, we appreciate your support and recognizing how important tourism is to our local economy.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. We are finished with you now. Gentlemen? Come forward. Ma'am? Ladies? Lady? Gentlemen? How y'all doing today?
Great to have you here. Wonderful having you here. I have a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week, which is May 18 through the 24, 2019. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and the citizens and visitors of Sebastian are fortunate that we have sufficient waterway and ocean resources to accommodate a wide variety of pleasure boating activity. Whereas using alcohol or drugs while operating a boat or choosing not to wear a life jacket are examples of very risky boating activity that often, and often leading to disaster. On average, 700 people in the U.S. die each year in boating-related accidents. Whereas we must continue to spread the message of boater safety measures to protect our friends, family, and fellow citizens, not only during National Safe Boating Week, but also throughout the entire year. Whereas thanks to the courageous men and women of the United States Coast Guard who serve our nation and are always ready to keep our citizens safe on the water, I encourage everyone to visit www.uscgboating.org to learn more about the responsible boating. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May 18 through 24, 2019, as Safe Boating Week, and encourage all citizens to observe this occasion by learning more about the safe boating process.
Mayor Hill, I want to thank you for this proclamation. Councilmembers, we appreciate your support. Thank you very much for this time. We're just here to remind you that recreational boating is our main mission of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. We support this by doing vessel safety checks, by having public safety classes, by doing patrols on the river. We are a force of 25,000 people nationwide, all volunteers, and we've been around here in the Indian River area since 1942. So, we're here. If you're on the river, stop and say hi. We'll see you. Anything we can do to help you out, come to our boating safety classes, come to our vessel safety exams, and let us help you make recreational boating safe for everyone. Thank you very much.
What are you doing, gentlemen? This is a proclamation for National Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15. National Police Week is May 12 through the 18, 2019. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as a National Police Week. And whereas members of the City of Sebastian Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city. And whereas it is important that all citizens understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, which include safeguarding life and property, protecting citizens against violence and disorder, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the City of Sebastian Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, Mayor Jim Hill, by virtue of authority vested in him as mayor of the City of Sebastian, do by here call upon all residents to observe the week of May 12 through the 18, 2019, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances, and further to observe May 15, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities and have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And Chief, I know you're back there videoing. We just want to say thank you to you. We appreciate the department, what you do for the community, what you give back to the community. I hear it all across the county on how wonderful the Sebastian Police Department is, how well their leadership is, great things about the officers, and I want to personally thank you myself. I appreciate what you do for the city and taking care of us the way that you do.
Just on behalf of our police department and the officers with our agency, I want to thank the citizens of our community. I want to thank council and city staff for the support that you guys have for us. We're very fortunate that we have such a great city, and our chief as well, who continues education for the officers to continue to get better and better, more professional. Thank you all very much.
And as Councilmember Yavino comes back up to the dais, I'll say that that's a very important issue to me. However, I felt that because Councilmember Yavino is a public safety officer, his entire life is involved in that, I felt it important that he would provide that proclamation this evening. So, thank you very much for doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a brief announcement. On May 17, the Sebastian Chamber Concert in the Park will be from 5:30 to 8 at Riverview Park. The band's name is Note for Note, and they play '60s to current hits. I also want to acknowledge the fact that Dr. Nikki Mosbeck, who is our chairman of the Natural Resource Board, has been selected as one of the five finalists for the 2020 Florida Teacher of the Year. Good luck, Nikki, and best wishes.
A lot of very talented people here in the city of Sebastian. Thank you for that. At this time, I'm going to recess the city council meeting, and we will reconvene as the Board of Adjustments. I'll take a motion on item 7A, please.
Move/approval. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Item B, this is a quasi-judicial public hearing this evening, and I will now open the meeting and ask Mr. Stokes to read the file.
Yes, a variance is requested from Section 54-2-5.10A2 of the Sebastian Land Development Code to allow the height of a proposed overwater building to be measured from the existing concrete slab's finished floor elevation, 11.5 feet, to roof ridgeline, whereas the code requires such measurement to be from the required base flood elevation, seven feet, or the average construction grade, minus 1.2 feet, whichever is greater.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do any of you have any ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
All right, hearing none, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please swear in all those who intend to provide testimony this evening?
Which you are about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Would you like to go ahead and make a presentation to us? I think it is. Just talk.
Is it on?
Yes.
My name is Buzz Underill. I represent Seminole Marina Partners. I think the staff report pretty accurately reflects what we're requesting today, although I have Ryan McLean with us. He's our engineer. Be happy, either one of us will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Carlyle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've got Ms. Bosworth here to go over the details, but this project has been many years in the making. It has gone, I think, from the early '90s in its original development and site plan approvals. And as we all would like to see something done down there on that piece of property, we want to make sure we follow the process and we do the right thing, and that we've crossed all our Ts and dotted all of our Is. And staff has diligently looked into this, and there's been some questions raised, but I'll let Ms. Bosworth give the staff report for councils and the public's review.
Thank you, Mr. Carlyle. This issue came about because we have received a site plan modification for the Seminole Marina's partner property, which includes the existing Squid Lips and the marina down there. And while we were reviewing that site plan, which the site plan is proposing some other uses, additional parking, landscaping, stormwater, definitely some improvements to the existing site, we were checking and making sure that the proposed building elevations meet the requirements of the general code in the overlay district. Building height is measured from, as stated by Mr. Stokes, either from the base flood elevation, required base flood elevation, or the average grade. The average grade on this particular property, since the existing concrete pad is overwater, is minus, and it is in VE zone. The base flood elevation is seven. So, 25 feet, which is the maximum amount, would be measured from that. They were measuring, the proposed building elevation is being measured from the finished floor elevation, which was built according to some previous state jurisdictional permits in the early '90s. There's both an Army Corps permit and a DEP permit that was issued for the finished floor elevation of the slab at 10 feet. The slab is at 11 and 1/2. There was a revised DEP permit that does show 11 and 1/2, as you have in your packet. So, there could be an argument that because the slab is existing, that they should measure it from there. The code has been changed. From 1991, as you can see, nothing has been placed on that slab. And a previous developers agreement has expired, so there is no grandfathering in with any of the currency. They are required to meet the current code. And based on how that is measured, we let them know that they were going to need some sort of variance to get with what they were proposing. So, basically, what they're asking for, and you can look at it two different ways, is they are asking for a different spot on which to measure their building height, the top of the slab instead of the base flood elevation. Or if you say, okay, you've got to get it from the seven feet, they're asking for an additional four and 1/2 feet to that building height. We have reviewed their requests with regards to the criteria that council has to consider for their determination, and we feel that they have met most of that criteria, and we are recommending approval with the following three conditions. We are requiring that they need to provide certified engineered proof of structural integrity regarding the existing overwater concrete pad before construction begins. We're requesting that so that if it turns out that the slab does have to be re-engineered, reconstructed, and the pad is taken down, they will have to then meet the current requirement of its seven feet.
And the structure.
And the structure would have to be measured from the...
Mr. Mayor, not only the slab, but the supporting pilings need to be, someone needs to sign off that they're able to support the structures they want to put on there. It's been there for 28 years.
Right.
So, it's not just a slab. It's the entire structure needs to be certified, that it's able to withstand the loads that they plan on putting on there.
Yes, and then if that comes back, that does need to be changed or revised at that point, then we can require that the slab had to be built at the required seven feet. The number two recommendation condition would be that the variance is for the restaurant building only. If a building hasn't begun, and they would like to change the use to an office building or townhouses or something like that, the variance would not be eligible for that building just for the restaurant use. And also that the variance is valid for two years. The approval shall expire 24 months from the date granted. If construction has not begun, then they would either have to adjust the building height to 20 and 1/2, but the variance would not be applicable anymore to that building if it's after two years. And with that, staff recommends with those three conditions.
All right, thank you very much. I guess the one question that I have is, we're going to be measuring if this passes from the finished floor elevation. Now, there's a portion of that slab that doesn't exist there. I mean, I think a corner of the slab is completely broken off, if I'm not mistaken. They're going to be, if we pass this, they'll be able to replace that corner, I suppose, at the same elevation, and we'll just go from what is currently there as it is.
As long as those pilings are still engineered, structurally sound.
Right.
And they don't have to take out a good portion, more than 50% or something. If the majority of that slab has to come down to readjust those pilings, then this variance would not be applicable to the new structure.
Okay, so if they have to remove the entire floor, then this thing doesn't transfer?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's staff's recommendation as a condition. So, if the slab is deemed to be, if the slab is deemed to be not structurally sound to support the infrastructure they want to place on it, and they have to remove the slab, but let's say hypothetically that the pilings were structurally, they could cut the pilings down to meet the...
Understood, yeah.
So, if the slab has to come off, it needs to meet the height. Obviously, if the pilings in the slab are not structurally sound, no one wants to build on that, nor does the applicant wish to build on that. So, they would bring it down, but they would have to put it at the elevation that's proposed, not, the variance would no longer be transferred.
And so, if in fact it is found to be not structurally sound, and so this variance, and so they can't build on it, is there any recourse for the city to make them remove that as a non-conforming structure? Mr. Attorney?
It would be something we'd have to look at. Just recently, we came up in the file that that site plan was changed a number of years back to being just an observation deck.
Right.
That being the case, that building permit was closed out, and it's an observation deck, but as an observation deck, it's probably not compliant with our code either because of certain safety things that are missing there.
Like the floor.
So, it would definitely be something that myself and community development and the building official and code enforcement would dig into and look. We'd either get it to the point of being a compliant structure, or it would have to go.
Perfect. All right, great, thank you. Council, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant at this time? All right, hearing none. I will now ask for anyone who is in favor of the request from the audience, if you wish to speak on this right now. Anyone opposed may speak at this moment. Anyone opposed? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. This city has our height ordinance of 35 feet, I believe. We went through a lot of time to register this so that we're not obstructing the river reviewing. We've even purchased a motel, so nothing could be built to obstruct the view. And initially, when I first moved here 10 years ago, the question came up, what was that slab? Someone jokingly said it was a helicopter pad. I thought that might have been logical, based on the fact we have a hospital nearby. I also had heard, never checked it, didn't have a need to, that it was condemned after a storm or a hurricane. The next one is, if I took a permit out and let the permits lapse, then I have to resubmit and come up to today's compliance. Now, asking for a variance is against our height regulations, and jokingly, the helicopter pad, I actually watched a helicopter land on there, a very small one. Not having a camera in my pocket, I didn't get a picture. But we're trying to protect the waterfront. We're trying to make sure that everything stays at a set level, and we've got a structure here. When we put our piers in after the hurricane, the pilings were below the standard depth. It cost the city extra money in those piers to have the piers drop down several more feet. Now, what condition, what was the piers put in that? What's it sitting on? I believe you said they've had to do an engineering review on it. And you're right. This cement and concrete over 20 years exposed has deteriorated. But the fact that it was applied for, never acted on, now coming back to the council, they knew that there's requirements. Now, for a variance, I don't understand why we're doing this. You've got a situation, it was just mentioned, cut the height of the pier down. Yes, it's a big job, trying to support that concrete slab and lower it down. Now, has there been anything presented as to what the building looks like in a site plan? Has it gone before planning? Has it gone anywhere other than, I have a great idea, I'm going to put a building up here, and I want to change the height elevation, and I'm going to tell you what I'm putting on it. Maybe a restaurant. I'd like two stories. I'd love to have a catering hall above it, but I'm caught up in a height requirement. Today's ordinance, the city ordinances are stating that we have a height restriction today. This is over 20 years it's been sitting there, from what I gather. I think more looking into, because if you do a variation on one, you're going to end up doing it on anybody else who has some elevation problem with their properties. And again, I think a little more research into it. At least present what's going to be put on it. If it's a one-story, fine. I assume he's looking for a two-story. And height, really not going to block the view, because I believe he owns, the party owns the property to the west of Indian River Drive there. But again, we have changed our ordinances for a reason. 20 years going by, I think we should look a little further before changing one of our complete packages for the city itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this issue?
Damian Williams, President of SebastianPropertyOwnersAssociation.com. That's how you can reach me. That's my email. Or you can get me on Facebook, Sebastian Property Owners Association. So, I've been waiting 27 years for this, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how many times I've been in front of this board, telling you about that structure down there that was in non-conforming... structure down there that was in nonconforming, in violation. I watched your meeting, two meetings ago, Mr. Walters' property and US One AT&amp;T's purchasing. You slapped that guy with $100 fine per day, I don't know, 10 years, $400,000. So just think about that guy who was in violation for his sign, and he had to live with that over his head, trying to sell his property with a lien from the city. You guys, you knew what you did, and this was on his mind. But yet, you have a good old boy developer down on Indian River Drive. We told you about it numerous times. It's on my campaign. I campaigned about it. I brought it to your attention, and you did nothing. You looked the other way. Guilty, all of you. You all knew it was down there. Guilty, sinful, despicable. There's no other words. Deplorable. There's nothing that can describe it. It's called "good old boy special double standards in the community," and it's sickening. And nobody's afraid to come up here and call you out on it, but I'm going to call you out on it. So I wanted to get that out, because I want you to compare that to the other property. Your major site plan modification under zoning review? Well, I looked up your codes, nonconforming and noncompliance and environmental protection. You're in complete violation. I want to get that on the record. We are checking to see if we have legal standing to take you to court and challenge this. I just want to let you know, we're going to check. We want to make sure you guys play by the rules. Your major site plan modification? Well, it's not a site plan anymore. You have to start from scratch. It's not a modification. It's been abandoned. It says it in your own paperwork. You're talking about the height, finished floor to roof line, 11.5 feet, and the LDC code that says that you can go from the base floor elevation, asking for four and a half feet higher. You just bought $700,000 worth of real estate on Indian River Drive, the old hotel. We're going to open up the view. That's why we're buying it. We're going to get rid of that building on the west side, but we're going to keep the view open. And what do you do? You let this, your staff bring this in front, and you're going to build a building in front of the view down the street. Talk about hypocrites. I mean, that's pathetic. We spent $700,000. I watched you here that night, and you said, "Yeah, we got to save the view." And now you're going to take a site plan that's been abandoned, nonconforming, didn't pay any violations for 28 years, and I want to watch you pass this tonight. Because I know that's what you're going to do. The piling, the building, the shell, it says it. The shell, they issued a permit for the shell. The shell never got built. It's an abandonment. Permit was abandoned. There should have been a fine, $100 a day. But I know, we're all a little chicken around here. I understand. So you're going to have to get all your DEP, St. John's Water Management, Army Corps of Engineer, all of these agencies, all federal and state agencies, all have to be sent a letter of what's going on down here, and you need to put them on notice. Because if you pass this tonight, it's criminal, literally criminal. And I'm going to base it on facts, because that's what the court's going to look for. Your new code in 2000, says it in your report, section five, let's see, 5.4... 2.5, 10, paragraph A, number two, requires that the measurements, the average construction grade for the required base flood elevation, be brought up to code. It's very clear. You cannot create your own variance. A hardship is one thing. He's creating his own hardship down there. So you're in violation there. And I went through your statement by your staff, which I'll get to in a second.
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Just let the record reflect that the city staff is... I guess Dory, who testified, Bosworth, is not a city engineer. I'm not sure if she has the right to sign off on this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
That's for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Take a seat. Is there anyone else this evening who would like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. Would the applicant like to respond or to surmise what you've got going on here, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. I appreciate you guys taking the time to give variance on this. My name is Ryan McLean with MBV Engineering. Our firm is the active engineering record for the site plan as aforementioned. Just to answer some kind of base questions, not going to direct anything directly, it came about, of course, as part of the major site plan process to take it forward. There is an active, of course, encouragement to complete the project and move forward. The agent is very encouraged as far as pushing forward on this project as quick as possible. Subsequent process is dealing with an existing slab in a very atypical situation, of course, and dealing with the construction of the restaurant makes the most sense, leading to the observes, the observations, you know, aforementioned here. So essentially, the variance is really just essentially approaching a process to meet us to an architectural standard, allowing us to meet the CWR zoning. The CWR zoning is a 25-foot reduction from the active 35 feet, of course. And essentially, it's a straightforward process on our end, doing what we can to get the process done, to get you guys a beautiful project built in the City of Sebastian, to clean up any sort of eyesore as aforementioned, and to clarify any other additional questions you guys may have. I'm open for response accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
I do want to respond to that, yes, there has been a new site plan application that was submitted last year before the holidays. So we are not working off of the old site plan or the old approvals. There has been a request for a new site plan that is going to put something on the slab, put in some better stormwater ponds and maintenance down there, additional landscaping. We're going to fix the signs they're proposing to. This is not going before planning and zoning yet. When we brought this issue up about the building being too high, it was the applicant's decision to take this before you first to see if they could get the variance. If they did not get this variance, it may adjust both the building elevations or how they wanted to proceed with the project. We could have taken this before planning and zoning first to get the site plan approval conditional on getting a variance from the council. But this was the option that the applicant has decided to choose to get this variance first or request it, and then we will proceed with the site plan. A lot of the other issues or some of the timelines or things like that, we can put as conditions on the site plan. We did not put them. They're not applicable to the variance, but that's for the site plan review and for the Planning and Zoning Commission to make their decision on approving or denying that site plan. But I did want to verify that there is a new site plan application in that we are reviewing.
Okay, thank you. And this is going to be a one-story structure on that slab?
Correct.
So, I mean, we do have drawings of... They're in the agenda of some sort of what they would... What they're kind of envisioning. Mr. Stokes, I have a question for you. If we were to pass this tonight, would be any of the five of us be committing a crime?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have the...
Not based upon any facts or information I have.
Okay, so basically, we have the authority to make this move if we so desire?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Staff, do you have any... I'm sorry. All right, Counsel, do you have any questions of staff or...
One quick comment. So just to clarify, the observation deck wasn't an abandoned project. So the permit that was presented to the regulatory agencies had it as an observation deck. They submitted a building permit to the City of Sebastian for a building permit, and the permits were extended, extended, extended. The building official at the time wrote them a letter and said, "You need to complete it. There are going to be no more extensions. If your intent is to make this an observation deck, you need to revise your site plan within 30 days and get it back to us." The developer at the time amended that site plan to show that slab as just an observation deck, which completed the building permit, closed it out, and closed out all of the DEP regulatory permits as complete. So what we've determined, and with legal's advice, we determined that project was closed. It wasn't abandoned as an observation deck. And there was a code visit out there regarding the safety, and they blocked access to it off. So as you know, code's responsibility is to provide a safe environment and give them an opportunity to make it compliant or make it where it's safe. So if they blocked it off, it was determined that made it safe. Was that the best alternative? I don't know, but I, you know, obviously, I can't go back there. But to say they abandoned the project really wasn't accurate, because we have the site plan and the revised site plan from the '93 when the building official accepted that as a closed project.
Okay.
And also to add to the record, with the new site plan, new permits and okays from the Army Corps, DEP, and St. John's is required with the new site plan also. So that will be forthcoming to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those, at least jurisdictional comments or letters that this is still in compliance with those original permits, or that, yes, we're okay with this, or you still have to do this, but we will be, as part of the site plan process, touching bases with those jurisdictional agencies.
Okay, and then, so they're asking for, to use the baseline height, the top of the floor. Where would it normally be? Seven feet from...
Yes.
So it'd be seven feet from flood plain?
Seven feet, and then there's a foot freeboard, so eight feet. You know, it would be adjusted.
So the difference, if we were to go to that versus what the request is, is what?
Four and a half feet.
Five point four.
Four and a half feet, yes.
So four and a half feet?
Yes.
Four and a half feet. So the difference, so we're talking about four and a half foot variance? We're not talking about putting a large two-story building on there?
There is an aerial, and there's also a picture from the road, and I just want to also, for the record, the road elevation is an average of five and a half feet. So the road is already at five and seven. They're at 11 and a half. So it's not like we're jumping up 11 and a half feet. It can be confusing without having a graded site plan in front of you to see those elevations. But the road, and that's why we supplied that picture to you also, that you could see where the road was, which is at five and a half feet. Seven is what's required for base flood. The slab is at 11 and a half.
Okay, and when they built the slab at 11 and a half, it was allowed? And in fact, the site plan had a building on that slab when it was constructed. Is that not correct?
What was presented to the staff in planning and zoning at that time, yes.
At that time, and it conformed to our codes at that time?
Yeah. I don't know if it necessarily was a discussion in the planning and zoning minutes, because I don't think it really specified in the code back then. And so there was this discussion, and the planning and zoning minutes reflect that they did discuss the 25 feet starting at the top of the slab. But again, that was back in '93, and throughout the years or whatever, we have determined that they are not grandfathered into any of that currency, because the restaurant structure was not built.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Dodd?
When I first read this, I wasn't overly comfortable with it, primarily it was because of the... It was the same conversation I had with you this afternoon, Dory, primarily because it was the inconsistencies that I found in there. Let me kind of summarize the information that I got in our conversations, is that roughly in 1992, DEP authorized them to build this slab. It permitted it at 10 feet. It was built at 11 and a half. They went back to DEP for a revised permit. Now, that tells me that the contractor built it a foot and a half too tall. They went back to DEP to get that permit revised. So it was revised. No, it's an answer. So it was revised, and which was proper. They did the proper thing by doing that, okay? They intended to put a building on it, so it was approved to have a building built on it. When it was determined that that project was not going to happen, for whatever reason, economic reasons or whatever, based on the city request, they went back to DEP and they got it approved as an observation deck, basically. And so it's currently, as an approval, as an observation deck. It's not an abandoned building. It's an observation deck. We can argue all day long about whether code enforcement should be writing all kinds of fines against them as an observation deck, because I'm sure there's lots of problems that could come up with that. But what they did is a limited access or restricted access to it to get around to all of that. So that kind of cleans up the chain a little bit, because it doesn't appear to be an abandoned deck as a result of the chain of sequences that they did on the permitting that was done. They are going to, in the site plan, they are going to... They're going to correct parking deficiencies with Squid Lips. They're going to correct parking deficiencies with the current dockage office and the restrooms that are there. They're going to correct some drainage issues that are there, and they intend to build another restaurant on that slab. That's... To me, that's a value, the value to the city to do that, especially the parking issues. I mean, you park across the street from Swizz Lips, which is why I park when I go down there to eat, and it's just, it's not, it's not an up-to-snuff parking lot and so forth when it works on that. I do think that some of the restrictions that are on this need to be elevated a little bit, the restrictions that the city proposed. The first one, I think when you talk about engineering, doing an engineering certification on it, it needs to make sure it indicates it's that current code. It doesn't really say that in there. It just says an engineering certification that says it's viable, but I think it needs to be, make sure it's brought up to current code. And that if the slab is not determined to be sound without reconstruction or without major repair work, that the variance goes away. They have to rebuild it or do a major reconstruction on it. I think they should do it at the proper level when they do that. I'd like to also see variance number three indicate a date. This basically says the approval shall expire June 1, 2021, which is two weeks from basically this month. Instead of saying date granted, because lawyers are great about coming up with terms on things like granted and arguing all day long about what the word means. So my preference would be we actually put a date in there on that. I dislike that slab for a long time, and I've listened to my friend Damian's conversations. I don't think we're criminal in doing this. I think that it's kind of muddy, the whole history of it is, but this will clean it up, and it'll get something built there that the city can need and can use. So I'm not opposed to it now, understanding the historical structure that went through on it. I was originally opposed, because I felt like the information in the packet didn't give me a true indication of the sequence of events that took place. First of all, it doesn't even reference the fact that it was re-permitted as an observation deck. You still... Everything I read on the... And here says it's a restaurant slab that was never built, therefore, that's got to go away. But since it was restructured as an observation deck, then it changes that a little bit.
I think we had... I don't want to say that it was purposely left out, but the state jurisdictional permits showed it as a restaurant. And I do want to just clarify then with your sequence, Mr. Dodd, in that what we found in the files was two different... Not two different, but we found two DEP permits. One was issued in '85. It went to... That one did show it at 10, and the Army Corps permit showed it at 10. The second DEP permit had the slab at 11 and a half.
Right.
I cannot state for sure if the slab was built at the wrong height, and that's why the second DEP permit was issued.
Okay, well...
But there was two different ones in there.
I was...
And the observation deck was just approved by staff. It did not go back up to DEP. There's no permit in the files from DEP as an observation deck. That was through staff and a staff site plan and staff letter.
Yeah, so I mean, the point in my mind was, we actually have a DEP approval that says 11 and a half.
Correct.
We have a DEP approval that changed the focus of the slab from being a restaurant foundation to being an observation deck.
No, that was just a site plan approved by the community development director at that time with a memo. There's not a DEP permit that says it's an observation deck.
Okay.
Because the slab was implemented, constructed, the DEP permit...
Okay.
...is still valid.
All right. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have any comments or more questions?
No.
No, I'll just say that, you know, I also had some concerns about this, and mostly my concerns were about the integrity of the structure itself. You know, I've been, for decades, discussing this as an issue and trying to figure out what to do with this, and it will be a heck of a lot better to have this property cleaned up, to have a restaurant there that'll service the citizens of this community, and any... You know, it's a private property, so we're basically talking about a four and a half foot variance, and there's really nothing else that you can put on this, so I'm pretty comfortable going forward.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Sir, are you the original owner of this property?
Yeah, since 1989.
Can you stop the podium, please?
Yeah, you need to be on the mic, please.
Since 1989.
You'll excuse me, I haven't been here since 1989.
Yeah.
How long have you lived in Sebastian? Or had property? So you've had property in Sebastian since 1989?
I've owned this property since 1989.
And where are you originally from, sir?
From Beavard County.
Okay.
Originally.
Okay.
But the permitting started on this in 1987, and the first permit... No, it was actually 1985. The first permit was issued in 1987, and I acquired it in 1989. And in 1991, I believe it was, we received a permit from the Army Corps. And that Army Corps permit was the one that required to go to 11 and a half feet. And it was built and completed, I think, in June of 1992, and it was built in conformance with the 11 and a half feet, which was required by that. And it's because the Army Corps required it at 11 and a half that we had to go back to the DEP. required it at 11 and a half that we had to go back to the DEP, actually before that it was the DNR, to go ahead and have them modify theirs to allow the 11 and a half, which was mandated by, by the government, by the U.S. Army Corps.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, council, anything else?
With your pleasure.
I'll move for approval.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairperson Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hill?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. I will now adjourn.
Just to clarify, that motion did include the conditions as requested by staff, correct?
By staff and Mr. Dodd.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be my motion. Do you need me to make it again? Why don't we just, especially since there's been threat of litigation, let's go ahead and clarify that person?
I move for approval with the requirements that Mr. Dodd spoke about and the requirements that staff spoke earlier about.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Anything to clarify?
Please do.
Jeanette has it.
Go ahead, Mr. Dodd.
No, we're fine just amending the motion.
I think Jeanette has it.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, now I have a question for Mr. Stokes. The process that we just went through right there with two separate votes, how does that stand up relative to the first one was passed?
Well, and that was the question that the manager had, whether you had to rescind the first one. I think because we were in time, we were clarifying it, and the clerk clarified your votes the second time. If we'd had more distance in time, like, let's say we were at the next meeting or whatever, and you wanted to actually call a question back, we might be more formal. But in this case, where we were just clarifying what the motion was, I'm confident we're on solid ground there.
All right, at this time, I will close the report of adjustment and convene a dispatch in City Council. Item nine, consent agenda, council, with your pleasure.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have item 10, committee reports and appointments. We have one this evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Roth has applied to be reappointed, and I would recommend that we reappoint Mr. Roth to the term to expire 5/1/2020.
I second that.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mr. Roth. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business, and now we have public input. At this time, anyone who wishes to speak from the public on any item that is not currently on the agenda may speak now. Yes, sir? Good evening.
I'd like to extend a thank you to Commissioner Dodd, McFarland, and our city manager for attending the Sebastian Property Owners Meeting Monday night, where we all were informed very clearly, I believe, of pesticide application, and it looks like there's a lot of people involved in it, thinking of it, but I do want to thank you for showing up, for your time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I reside at 586 Redwood Court. Good evening. I am the Vice President of the Friends of St. Sebastian River. For over three years, we have been researching the critical matter of twice a fate. We thank Mr. Dodd for making a motion to direct the city manager to research this very important matter and report back to the city council. We also thank the entire council for voting for the motion. Prior to the council making a final determination of their choice, we recommend a public forum, thereby permitting all residents the opportunity to voice their opinion. The Friends are looking forward to report that will list several options so that the city council can debate which option will ensure a healthy environment for our residents to be free from physical diseases. We realize that this is an arduous task to undertake, and will take time to research fully. In the meantime, we expect that no possibly dangerous chemicals will be used. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Damian Gilliam, Sebastian Property Owners Association. I want to thank city manager Paul for coming down to our meeting to listen to the discussion and the concerns of the community about the spraying of the canals. And I want to thank Mr. Dodd and Mr. McPartlin also for taking time out of their busy schedule to come down and listen to the pros and cons and the concerns of the community. I also am requesting that this council set up a workshop, direct the city manager to put a workshop and a public forum here in City Hall to discuss this very important issue that concerns everybody in the community. I just want to let you know as well that it was contacted, I think it was Friday of last week, and Eugene Wolfe, former city council member who lives on the canal, witnessed it, and I witnessed the boat going down the canal. One of the neighbors called me, right before storm, the guy's out there spraying. And you know in your guidelines and your procedures, you're not supposed to be doing that before a heavy rain, and, or a heavy wind. So if you can instruct your city manager to cease and desist on all spraying until this is resolved, we would greatly appreciate that, being that it affects the safety and the health of our community and the welfare. So we're looking to try to move this, fast-track it as quickly as possible, and we would greatly appreciate you directing your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to discuss this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 14, new business. We have a presentation this evening by James Golden, Pavement Management Group.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is. Mr. Golden is an expert in the evaluation of pavement conditions and the distresses that go into that, and one of the things we have talked to you all through the budget process, and since you hired me, is how we were going to best use city dollars, the tax dollars, and the best uses that we can, and we were going to develop this roadway plan. And we hired Mr. Golden, and he's been, he's been in this for longer than I can remember. I've worked with him in the past as well. And he's developed this plan, he's going to give you a presentation on it for two reasons. One, to inform the public of what we did and why we did it, and get some idea of how our road condition is, and how this program is going to allow us to better manage those dollars. So I'll let Mr. Golden go through the, through the, through the whole process, and then we'll, we'll discuss the options and the, and the program itself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all doing? Good, good, good. Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, public, thank you for the opportunity to present our project review, if you will. So the goal is to give you a good, solid overview of the project, as well as, you know, the concept of pavement management, and leading into the decision-making process of developing this proposed six-year plan. A little bit about myself, thank you for the warm introduction there, Mr. Carlisle. I've been at this for a long time. I've grown up in the pavement world, worked under an engineering firm for many years. My education is in information technology, so when I had the opportunity to start my own company years ago, continued this pavement management, you know, going down the road, if you will, excuse the pun, just made perfect sense. I've got a strong passion for Public Works, for city, and I want to commend you all, by the way, on the Chamber of Commerce and Small Business Initiative, as a small business center, I appreciate that. I serve on my board for my local Chamber of Commerce, and I also serve my city on the zoning board, so I just have a big appreciation above and beyond just the company stuff that I do. We're also a CPWG company, CPWG Engineering, that are based out of Tampa. We've got offices in the Tampa location, as well as up here in Oviedo, so we're just up the road, if you will. Been at this for a long time. We work directly with municipalities just like yourself throughout the United States, primarily here in Florida, as well as Ohio, in Missouri, and we're looking to keep growing the brand, if you will. Kind of leads me to this pavement management blueprint. After about eight years, like I said, of having my own company, you know, looking back, I'm trying to always say, how can we do a better job? You know, I'm taking a look at your side of the desk, Paul's side of the desk, Mr. Baker's side of the desk, as well as my own, and thinking, you know, when we talk about pavement, you know, one street, it has such a big impact on our communities, schools, businesses, staff, all that good stuff. So this pavement management blueprint is one I came up with just a few years ago, and it's been pretty well received. So I wanted to kind of go through the process with all of you and walk you through it, and then we'll get into the actual project results. So, step one, basically, is industry standard software. You know, leverage the industry standard software. I'm not a big fan of Pandora's Box and coming up with stuff in my garage and, you know, trying to pigeonhole everyone into buying my stuff. I actually leverage standards, industry standard software. We've heard the U.S. Army Corps mentioned a couple of times, you'll find that's the software product we recommend and leverage. Network definition, it's understanding this entire city of Sebastian here, 140, 50 miles of roadway out there, getting real intimate with that, breaking it down block by block. You know, identifying and tagging all the variables and attributes that go along with each pavement section. Having eyes on the pavement, we roll 1080p HD video for 100% of your network. Condition assessment, again, standards, international standards, ASTM, not just me walking around and saying, hey, I think it's a five, or I think it's a four. Mr. Mayor, what do you think it is? Is it a two? You know, it's actually leveraging standards so that we can get to the room and have these conversations and bring, you know, Public Works, you know, the community and council together to be communicative and collaborative on the effort. GIS integration, geographic information systems, you probably have a map in front of you that's showing some, some colors, and I'll talk about those in the actual proposed plan. It's tying all this pavement management data to a map, so map-driven, data-driven, we want to start thinking about that type of stuff. Budget needs, scenarios. We're currently spending around half a million bucks a year. What are we getting as a result of that? What's that yielding? You know, are we doing good? Are we getting worse? That's what this budget needs and scenario stuff is. Reporting, and finally managing the whole effort in terms of service. So, paver, and I know your time is precious, I won't go through, you know, every single bullet point here. Again, international, industry standard developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, backed by the American Public Works Association, okay? Key software right here, industry standard. This provides a holding tank, if you will, of all this data with some unique sets of tools that allow us to do these types of things that we're doing today. Inventory, taking, again, breaking your network down block by block, so all of your roadways, taking a look at functional class, prioritization, are our streets curbed and guttered, which ones, striping, all this good stuff, you know, breaking it down so we have a full, complete inventory, so we understand exactly what we've got out there. Work history, when was the last time each pavement section was resurfaced? What was that maintenance type? What was the cost? It's tracking all this information. Video, as I just mentioned, we roll 100% 1080p HD video across your network, so we've got eyes and ears in the office, that can be presented to the public as well. I'm a huge fan of transparency. I enjoy what I do, obviously, so when I'm recommending a treatment to a roadway, which you're going to find a little bit down the road, it's great to have eyes on that in a community given environment, to understand exactly everything we're looking at, especially when it's based on a standard. The inspection process, here it is, ASTM, pavement condition index, it's a PCI. So how many of you can remember going back to grade school? And we got As, Bs, Cs, and Ds, and hopefully not too many Fs. That's what this whole process is. It's taking a look at the pavement section, if you will, and identifying all the different distress types, severity levels, and quantities that are occurring. And what's happening behind the scenes, thanks to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the algorithms and developing all of this, is we're starting at a 100, you know, excellent condition, and as we start identifying different distresses that are occurring out there, all the different types of cracks, and your potholes, and your patching, and your rutting, and all that good stuff, we start deducting, coming down to arrive at a final score. That's your PCI, pavement condition index. And then we kind of streamline that, if you will, so when you look at a map, you're seeing all these different colors, so we're breaking down this 100-point scale into seven condition categories, and you can see them here, from failed all the way up to excellent. And what that allows us to do is start making real recommendations and maintenance correlations between condition category and what is today's need of that pavement. Here's just a quick look at some of those asphalt distresses. As you can imagine, there's up to 20 different distresses that can occur in asphalt pavements. That's quite a bit. Some are similar, you know, but the bottom line is, it's about a 50-50 split. Half of these types of distresses are load-associated, so think of structure and strength, okay? And then think of, you know, we live in a solar, solar environment down here, here in Florida, right? So a lot of daily temperature cycling on that pavement, so you get a lot of block cracking and longitudinal and transverse cracking. So our job is identify, here's the distresses happening out there, which ones are load-associated versus which ones are climate-related, okay? Because, you know, if you're just an average citizen, maybe you're not, in my world, you know, 20 years of pavement management experience, you may see something out there and say, wow, that looks rough, that looks awful. But in reality, maybe it's just due to daily temperature cycling, you know? So the bottom line is, load-associated is going to carry a heavier deduct curve than climate-related distresses. Same set of concrete, I just throw this in there, your city doesn't have a lot of concrete pavement, so it's a new point, but just to know that we also have that as well. Again, GIS, Google Earth, it's leveraging this data, tying that to a map, so that now we can start opening up the conversations. Does that kind of make sense? It's one thing for me to sit here and talk about deduct curves and load-associated and density and algorithms and pavement models, but if I can't convey that in a way for all of us to get on the same page, what good is it? So this is a really big opportunity that we've got here, we're going to provide the city with this deliverable that basically, you know, Google Earth, we've all probably used that or seen that, right? We have that ability to overlay that map layer, and we have icons over every pavement section where we can click and roll video, streaming video to the desktop, which is pretty neat. It's not licensed, it just came part of the project, didn't it? You know, it's just part of our deliverable. We're trying to add as much value to the process as possible. Budget needs, scenarios, and planning, you know, it's going through this process and understanding, as of today, we have all these pavement sections out there, you know, pushing 1,500, 1,600 of them, actually. So as of today, where is each one at in terms of PCI? Some are good, some are bad. What is that maintenance recommendation today? What is the cost associated with it? As I mentioned before, you're currently spending about a half a million bucks, you know, your current average PCI is, I forget what it is off the top of my head.
74.
74?
74.8.
74.8, 75, so it's a C. C, C-plus, right? So if we're at a 75 today, and we're spending a half a million dollars, what's the expectation in year two, three, four, five down the road if we keep spending, and keep spending in a specific manner? That's what this process entails here. And then finally, our project deliverables, all these bullet points here, I just, I just talked about those. It's having, you know, great tangible things in hand where we can come in and have the same conversation without having to go through, you know, language or technology barriers, if you will. And then finally, continued support, you know, that's what we're here for. You know, my role as a consultant is to be an extension of the team, and that means all of you as well. It's leveraging myself and my team as a part of yours, and being able to come into council chambers tonight and have the opportunity to kind of convey this stuff. So it all makes some sense. You've got my email contact, my phone numbers, information's all in there, you know, as we get into some more technical stuff. But the biggest benefits of pavement management is this slide right here. It's identifying the right treatment for the right pavement and getting it at the right time. That's the concept, that's what we're trying to achieve. We understand that we're operating on a specific budget. We can't do every road, we would love to, right? I mean, in a perfect world, we would have an infinite amount of money and do what we need to do, but that's just not going to be the case. So what we're trying to do is put our best foot forward and look at saving some of the good roads now, because as you can see from my chart, the cost to do so is significantly less, and the benefit is significantly greater in terms of life extension of that pavement. And I can talk about remaining service life and, you know, cost-benefit analysis and all that good stuff some other day. But basically, it's creating a data-driven, map-driven approach to the annual maintenance and repair of your network, versus just saying, well, we got a half a million bucks, let's go to a worst-first scenario, and we'll spend until the budget's out, and maybe we got two miles done this year, you know, three miles done this year. Just a couple stats, the average cost to repair a mile of pavement, just in a traditional two-and-a-half, two-inch millon overlay, is around 125,000, 150,000 bucks. And I'm not talking about ADA ramps, curb ramps, striping, you know, mobilization, none of that stuff, that's just the pavement. So, that's the concept here and the benefits. Now, I'm going to walk you through the results of the project and lead into the proposal of the six-year project plan. So here's your results. You've got 148 centerline miles of pavement. How many of you really knew that before, right now? Maybe you did, maybe it was 144. Well, this is what the number came back to be, 148 miles. 290 lane miles, 15 million square feet of pavement out there that we're all driving on all day, every day, right? That equates about 14,000, excuse me, 1,400 pavement sections. So if you can think in your mind's eye, 1,400 pavement sections, our company visited, drove, and created a pavement condition rating for. And that number came out to be an average of a 75, 74.8, if you will. If you take a look at, you know, the state of Florida, if you will, that's right up on par with average, that's about average. We've got cities that are performing a lot better in the low to mid-80s, and we've got some performing a little less in the to the low, low 60s, excuse me, low 70s. So you're right on par currently at a 75, which is about average. We can absolutely do a little bit better, but it could be worse, you know what I mean? This is a great starting point, consider this your benchmark. Today, you're at a 75, and it's all about how we can continue to move forward from here. So, from our condition categories, this is classified as being good. I will tell you, I'm from the great state of Ohio, so our average network up there is a lot lower. We've got free stall, you know, so, you know, count your blessings if you don't have that free-stall stuff that comes, you know, through every year. Let's take a quick look at some road conditions. I've talked about excellent, good, fair, poor. Here's some visuals that are going to make sense to you. So if you think of an excellent-conditioned roadway, you think of something nice and dark and black, right? Something new, something that Paul and Scott put down last year, hopefully, right? Something that's brand-new. And this is just a classic example. Indian River Drive, pavement section number two, it's got a PCI of 100, it's fairly new, right? So we take a look at then treatment options in terms of correlating all this stuff and maybe do nothing. It's in perfect condition. Or there are absolute benefits to something such as a rejuvenator, Reclamite. I'm not sure if that's something that...
We have it in the bid.
Yep, there you go, they got it in the bid. So, we start taking a look at the conditions and looking at treatment options, so what are some good ideas? We'll go down the line, that's kind of how this works, right? Very good condition. You can see this pavement is a PCI of an 89. Brook Edge Terrace, section two here. You can see, I like using my pointer, I'm just pointing at myself, but, you know, I'm just, I'm used to being up on like a stage. You can see that this PCI ranges from an 82 to a 91. Brook Edge Terrace is an 89, section two here, and you can see the joint is starting to open up a little bit, we can all see that, right? Sometimes we like having these images after, you know, a rainfall, because you can really start to see where the, where does the water go? It goes into the cracks. So, we take a look at treatment options, you can see number one is crack seal. This could benefit greatly from a crack seal. This is the perfect time to do that type of thing. Be a little more proactive, maybe something like a slurry sear on micro-surface, which is a wearing course, that type of a thing. Excuse me. Columbia Avenue, section two, this PCI is a 71, okay? This condition is considered to be good, right? So, we just referenced that the average city of Sebastian pavement condition rating is a 75, so this is what you're kind of looking at. This is going to be your average roadway here within the city, something along those lines. You can see we've got that block cracking opening up, we've got a little bit of cracking on the edges now. The pavement has absolutely faded from pretty dark black, obviously, now to a light gray, a little salt-peppery mix going on there. What's happening is the pavement's starting to oxidize at this stage. It's starting to oxidize and weather, so your fines are starting to come in and come out. How many of you, you know, do your walking in the evenings on a curbed street of maybe 10, 15 years old, and you see these, the sand in the curb, in the curb and gutter? That's the fines coming out of the pavement, and that's what this pavement is showing you right here. So at this stage of the game, when a pavement gets to this point, you're looking at a crack seal and maybe a micro-surface to go on top, a wearing course, or depending on if you got a little bit of load-associated stuff going on there, you maybe have to do a cape seal, you know, so just some treatment options. Fair condition, you can see this road has now progressed, we've got that block cracking wide open, you can see those cracks are nice and thick. If you took your pencil or your pen, you could absolutely stick it in the, in those crevices, right? That's kind of one of our gauges in terms of medium severity. So at this stage, you know, we don't have a lot of load association going on here, but it's getting to a point where the climate-related distress is really maxing out here, okay? So this is what I would call critical. The PCI is a 55. And in the pavement management world, not just me, anyone else out there doing this stuff, they'll tell you that 55 is considered to be your critical PCI point. What we're really saying here is, at this stage, anything below this 55, you've lost all opportunity for a preventive or preservation opportunity, you're now stuck into a major maintenance measure. That would be the best benefit. Could you crack seal this? I mean, sure, but you're not going to get the benefit of it. Could you put a micro-surface or a wearing course on it? Sure, but it's going to reflect right back through in a year. So here, at this stage, if you did a heavy cape seal, you know, that's a possibility, but probably a millon overlay, you know, right? We're to the point now where the pavement is just deteriorated, it's going to be a little bit more of a rougher ride. So milling that wearing course off, taking care of some base repair, and putting another two-inch course back on. Here's a poor condition. So now, we've really gotten to load association. This is called alligator cracking, and it's called alligator cracking for a reason. It's pretty identifiable, right? I'm sure you've all been driving around, you've seen this at some point, maybe you didn't know what it was called, but now you do. The technical term for it's fatigue cracking, but it's alligator cracking. And what's going to happen is if we don't start taking care of the pavement now, you know, unfortunately, we're going to have to do a major millon overlay at this stage, but this is where potholes start to come about, okay? So these pieces that you're staring at are currently at a medium state. As time goes on and being continued neglect, what will happen is these pieces will start rocking under pressure from load, and they'll start popping out, and now you get potholes. Just one of a few different ways to get potholes. So you can see, you know, this would be the recommendation, you know, we could do a millon overlay here and do some significant partial floor-levelt repair. Probably in your mind, as I'm going down, you can hear like the costs are getting higher and higher at each stage, right? So, very poor condition, I mean, you can just see what's happened. You know, this is just further progression of what we just looked at, that was the goal of the presentation. You get to this spot here, you're not really going to benefit from spot-based repairs, you're going to have to do something major, like a cold-in-place recycle, some soil cement stabilization, full-depth reclamation, that type of a thing. Because we can take two inches off of a pavement that looks like this and put two inches right back, and it's going to look beautiful for a few years, but we haven't taken care of the real issue, which is the base. So you'll start to see all that stuff come right back through guaranteed in just a matter of five, seven years. So that's why we make those types of recommendations in these types of categories. You did not have any failed pavements in terms of, by definition, of failure, a zero to a 19 PCI. So, it doesn't mean you don't have any bad pavements, it just means that that specific classification wasn't noted here. You have plenty of very poor. In any case. Map conditions, that's some stuff that you're looking at, you know, so I want to walk you through the process now. We've got this data for every pavement section PCI, you know, I can start making a correlation to maintenance action and condition. I now have this overlay on a map, which is nice. You know, instead of looking at numbers, 62, 58, 43, you know, 95, I'm now getting more streamlined here, right? So I can take a look at a specific area, or a neighborhood, or an archeryal, a major roadway, and I can look at the color of that, and I can start to see what's happening. We've also got the streaming video, by the way, that's what I kind of mentioned here. So from the project planning perspective, I've got these, I've got these roadways colored based on condition category, and I've got icons, and that's what this screen is showing. I can click on that, and I'm now viewing like I'm on the pavement. I would have loved to give you all video, but I had to email the presentation, it was too big. So. Project planning, that kind of leads us into, you know, I gave you all that background to talk about how we project plan. I wanted you to see that there's a physical process and system behind all of this and the methodology. So, the first thing we've got to do is identify a proposed annual budget. So, you know, we took a look at a half a million dollars in year one, and then years two through five of a five-year, six-year plan, five-year plan, about $525,000, okay? Maintenance toolbox. So, we've got a half a million bucks, we've got all these roadways out there, what are some tools in the toolbox that we're going to start looking at? Okay, do we want to get into a heavy preservation program? Are we going to get stuck in a worst-to-first type situation? What is going on here? So this is the proposed maintenance decision tree, if you will. And you can see, I've got my condition categories on the left, right there in the middle, it's saying maintenance action. You can see I've got a low and a high PCI value. So now, in your mind's eye, I'm looking at roadways that might be magenta or yellow, and I'm now making the correlation to maybe a millon overlay. I know what the costs associated with each of these treatments are, because I work with the contractors to understand, I go to, I go to the filing cabinet and take a look at past performance and past costs, all that good stuff. And then we talk about project distribution. You know, are we going to look at just doing, over this five-year plan, just concentrating on one little area? You know, probably not. We want to be fair and balanced and try to spread the wealth, if you will, spread the projects the best that we can throughout the city. You know, that's what, as a resident, that's what I would want, you know, that's what I'd like to see. So, this is the actual proposed plan right here. You can see the total cost over the five years is about 3.1 million. Major M and R, about a million bucks. Preservation, about 2.2 million. We're aiming to improve 25 miles, that's about five miles a year over the five-year period. That's a 17% impact on your pavements. So now you've got actual data and numbers going along with what you're doing, right? And you can see that over this five-year period, even though we're putting our best foot forward, we're still falling a little bit short, aren't we? We're starting at that 74.8 today, we're projected to drop a couple points, if you will, by five years, even though we're trying to be as proactive as possible. This is what each year of the project looks like, I can go through each one of these, but I think you kind of get that, the same metrics are applied year by year, year by year, year two, and you can see how it's broken down. So in year two of the plan, we're looking to improve five miles. Year three of the project plan, about four miles. And you can see, you know, there's a process behind all this. You know, we take a look at stringing projects together from a mobilization perspective, really just trying to get the best bang for our buck. It's as simple as that. You know, finally, year five, and you can see as I walk through this, you know, year three of the project plan, the PCI is a 74, then a 73, and then landing on a 73. So, with that said, if we're spending about a half a million bucks each year, the next six years, in this manner, we're absolutely doing the best we can with the budget that we've got, but you can see we're still losing a little bit of ground. So, hopefully that made some sense, I can take some questions, if you've got any questions or...
Yeah, I guess the first question I'd have is, you say we'll lose a little bit of ground, that's better than losing a heck of a lot of ground.
That's right, absolutely.
And I suppose, I guess what the desire would be is, okay, the 73 is a good number on average, is there, are there less bad roads in there and the excellent roads? So everything kind of starts moving into the middle, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
You know, and then that would be more acceptable, so we, you know, we don't, we're not, like, we have a bunch of 90s and a bunch of 19s.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying? I guess the goal would be to ultimately have a plan that would be able to continue going forward and maintaining even after the six years, and potentially having this progress go, "All right, we have a six-year plan, but next year we should have a six-year plan, and then the year after that, we should have a six-year plan." And so that there's always, when one year's gone, the next year comes on, and so that this is sort of an evolving plan. And, you know, as long as, you know, you're getting rid of the poor and failed, and it's all kind of moving to the middle, I think, that that's, that would be the most positive thing, and I guess that's a question.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate the narrative, because that's absolutely what we're trying to do. This is, pavement management is a living, breathing thing. What we don't want to do is publish a six-year plan and say, "Hey, move on, we'll see you all in six years," right? We want to continue the analysis, the advantage of having that pavement management system on the backend for the team and myself is that we can manage that each year. We can see, you know, as we're paving and updating the work history, what is the real result, you know? And then continuing being on the offense for the next year. So I agree with that 110%. So each year, it's revisiting this and seeing what the impact was after our program, and then coming up with the next, year seven, and then year eight, absolutely. And finally, that is absolutely the goal, is to, this, by the way, I think eliminates your critical pavements by year six, if I remember correctly. So there's 55 and belows, so now you're at a, you're at a threshold there where the public is feeling pretty good about kind of what's going on at the end of this, but you're moving the needle, just like you said.
Yeah. Mr. Carlow. Real quick, too, so what we plan on doing is in year, after the third year, is doing another complete evaluation of the entire roadway structure. This is a synopsis where we, this is the first year, we're going based on empirical data, but the real data will be in, after the third year of this program, doing a complete evaluation again and seeing where we are. What this doesn't show you, this plan doesn't show you, and I know Mr. Golden will agree with this, it doesn't show you what would happen if we were just continually doing worst-first. The PCI would definitely drop below 73 and probably into the 60s. But we didn't do that study because we know that using these best management practices throughout the process will keep us basically where we are, but it doesn't show how far we would drop if we didn't do this, and that's what we didn't study. By year three, we'll do another complete overall study and get another baseline, and maybe have to adjust after that. But right now, we're going on this data, so that clarifies it.
Yeah, I try to do my best to streamline the presentation, it encompasses a lot, I know your time is valuable, so I appreciate that.
No, it's great, this is great information. It's important for the public to, number one, understand that, that our roads are pretty good. I mean, we're, I'm not saying that if you have a pothole in front of your yard, or in front of your house, that you don't have a beef, that's understandable. But overall, the presentation has basically told us that we're in pretty darn good shape. But we're at a critical point where if we don't start managing this, then we could start dropping off and losing some of these roads.
That's correct.
I guess the process that we had been going over for years had been, all right, what's the worst five roads we got? Let's go pave them. And so, and then we run out of money on road four, and then the fifth road would be the one that gets paved first next year. And so I guess that's, that's a pretty poor plan, but I'm glad to see that this is, it's very, very impressive. It's very impressive what I think you've done. Counsel, any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, then we'll move us then to item AA. Mr. Carlow.
So what we'd ask you to do, and the reason we thought it was important, normally they don't bring them to council to adopt, we thought it was important to show that we're going to be, we're going to be held to the fire on this. It is a growing plan, but it's, we can tell the public, "Look, we have developed a plan, we've developed a process, so when the phone call comes in and says, 'Why didn't you pave that road and you paved my road,'" we can say, "We've had it engineered, we've had it studied, we have a plan, and if we stick to the plan, you're going to see benefits." That's not to say we can't modify it based on different circumstances, but I think if we maintain the status quo and council agrees that this is the best course of action, and we stick with it, and if we go to amend it, we bring it back to you all, that we have a process. Funding, you know, as we did a proposal, we did a bid, so we can enact this program. As prices change, the number of roads we may be able to do changes. Some of these roads have some significant swell work that needs to be done, they may have to change that a little bit through the stormwater funds, but it's going to be a cohesive project. We're going to address the swells and the drainage on these roads as we do them, otherwise we'll be right back where we started. So we'd ask you to consider adopting a six-year road plan and do it as funding is available.
Okay, great. Counsel, do you have any questions, the staff or Mr. Golden? What's your pleasure?
I'll move the purple.
Second. Anyone from the public who should speak on item 14AA.
Good evening, Ben Hawker, City of Sebastian.
Ben Hawker, City of Sebastian.
Good evening.
I thought I was listening to an info commercial. What is the dollar amount that we're paying this company? And do we have any idea of the sequence of the roads? I live on one street. The road was nice. I don't know whether it's rated A, B, C, D, 70%, 2%, whatever. It might have been numbered. Is there a list of the sequence of road repair?
Yes.
Is it in your pamphlet?
Yes.
Then I'll get a copy of it off the internet. Now, I'm going to cite a quick example. I have three homes being constructed across the street from me. So far, there's been about 10 cement trucks, landscaping trucks, the trucks that bring the sod in. The road has been actually destroyed and busted in front of three homes. Now, if I am number 89 on the number list, where do I have a way of coming to the city and saying, hey, the road just fell apart here? I know we have inspection of the properties in that, but I also found out my road is two feet narrower than it should be. I found that out when I found out where the other curb cut is. My truck just about goes across the road side to side. I guess I might have to buy a Model A. They're a little narrower. And does this take into account the fact that our vehicles are getting wider? I can't go down my streets in my area if there's a landscaper coming with a relatively medium-sized trailer. I've got to be pulled over to the side of the roadway or move way over on the roadway. There is a dilemma with that. My mirrors on the truck don't fold, and mailboxes don't like my mirrors. Again, what are we paying this gentleman? And we're going to go into an investment of six-year plan, which can be adjusted in three. And so far, I heard no plan but percentages of roads. Have they traveled all the roads to get that list?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they have.
All right. Again, over six years, what's in our budget and in the taxes for us as citizens?
I don't believe it is yet. We can get it on there.
Yeah, I'll get your file off it. I copied it before you...
There is a complete plan here, and it just has to be on the website.
No, before you, it disappears. I made a copy of it. But again, are we paying this gentleman a dollar? Are we paying him $100,000? What are we paying for this particular one? And did he come here to the city with an idea? Or did we go out for bid to see if there are other companies that do it? I'm looking for a dollar number.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, is my street the last street? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else which should speak this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Andrea Green, Thoro 7 Query Lane. I would like to let you know I live on one of the poor streets. I've been complaining for a long time about my street, but I'm very glad to hear you're going to address the issue of the stormwater drainage at the same time. Is that, I heard you say that. I'm going to hold you to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damien Giliums, sebastianpropertyowners.com. That presentation, Mr. Golden.
Where do you live, sir? Sir, where do you live?
I live, my office address is 1623 U.S. Highway 1.
Thank you.
I looked on the list. No, you put me in the back. I expected that. I figured that was a personal favor to me. Anyway, the presentation was awesome. It was golden. We needed it. It's long overdue. We've been waiting for this, you know, it's on our hit list for the Sebastian Property Owners Association to come down and haunt you about this one because we've been waiting patiently between the paving and the drainage, and now it's one thing I can cross off my list and I don't have to hassle the city manager about. But the, I looked at the presentation. It's long overdue. Put the money aside, the $500,000 a year, money well spent. It's going to save us money in the long run, getting back to redoing base work. I know we spent a lot of money on that asphalt truck, and I know that they were making an effort, but I want to commend the city manager for getting on this right away. This is just long overdue, and I'm sure some credit goes to the city council as well. I'm not going to give you too much credit. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city manager. One last thing I can scratch off our list. Thank you.
Anyone else which should speak on anything, on this item this evening? Thank you. Counsel, any more questions or discussion?
I'd like to make a comment that this is the same counsel that hired Paul Carlisle, who brought his idea and brought his presentation to the city. So the same gentleman that was just up here commenting about how we shouldn't have hired Paul Carlisle because he didn't have a degree and what have you, is actually turning out to be a very benefit to the city. So, Mr. Carlisle, I thank you for being here, and I thank counsel for voting a man.
All right. Sir. What's your pleasure?
Yeah, I, I'm very happy to see this. I've been an advocate of this for a long time. And the one nice thing is that we also, we not only have a six-year plan for street repair, we also now have a six-year plan for a major investment in stormwater, which means that, that we no longer are, we're no longer spending a majority of our stormwater money just running after little parts. We're now actually fixing the pieces that need to be fixed in that process. So I think that's very, it's very good. And with that, I'll move approval of the six-year plan.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I just want to point out that Vice Mayor Kitchen made that...
I wouldn't say we already had a motion.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And Councilmember McPartland seconded it.
Do I have a second?
Mr. McPartland seconded.
All right. Roll call, please.
I want to vote for it.
Okay, very good. Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have one item this evening. I'd just like the public to know that the City of Sebastian has, has a policy to use whatever products we can utilize that is the safest, most cost-effective products that we have to maintain the beautiful quality of life we have in this beautiful city of Sebastian. We all have families here. We love the community, and we all want to be very safe. And that's all I have this evening. Madam Vice Mayor.
You missed the city attorney and the city managers.
No, they don't need to fix names.
They don't get to talk.
I've got nothing, sir. Mr. Stokes. I'm sleeping down there.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just take a minute to talk about where I'm at with this study on the alternative products, just because it's been a topic, and I did attend the meeting. I've attended several meetings regarding this, and I'm still gathering information. As it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, it's going to be an arduous task. I've reached out to University of Florida, communities that have, for a long time, limited the use of herbicides, waiting to hear back from them, gathering as much information as I can. I want this, I don't want to just give a report that says, do X, Y, or Z without making sure that what we do is going to, going to work. And if there's products out there or procedures out there that will make this ability, we all want to use as least amount of chemicals, fertilizers, as we can. We want to do it safely, as the mayor just said. We want to make sure we're maintaining it, but we also have to, a flood control issue we have to maintain as well. So just to let everybody know, we're not sitting on the sidelines. We're working hard on this. If you, the file on my desk, it's thicker every day. With people I've talked to, I got a couple of pieces of information from two individuals at the meeting on Monday night. We're chasing that down. There's supposedly a speaker in Gainesville on the 18th of June. I'm trying to reach out and find out what that's all about, and I may attend that. They're supposedly have some alternatives. So it's going to be a long and arduous task, but I think it's prudent upon us to take our time and get it right and get accurate information. So I appreciate that. And the one last thing is, is I don't know how it's going to work, but I emailed Senator Mayfield's office and Senator, Representative Groll's office. There was $500,000 put in the budget for the Septic Sewer. In the, in the budget reconciliation, it was put in the Indian River County's request for the North County. They're trying to work out how that money can be transferred over to us for the Indian River Lagoon, or for the Indian River Lagoon, the Septic Sewer, and the CRA. So we're going to work on that. So I think it was fruitful that we went up there. I appreciate Senator Mayfield and Representative Groll's support in getting that for the City of Sebastian and for the Indian River Lagoon as well. That's all I have.
Outstanding. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. All right, thank you.